...is being conducted electronically pursuant to Governor Bill Lee's Executive Order Number 16. I would ask for a motion that conducting the meeting electronically is necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare in light of the coronavirus. Is there a motion? Have a motion, is there a second? And a second, Commissioner Cook. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Jernigan? Commissioner Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Serenyo?
Yes.
Twenty yes.
Twenty yes, thank you Madam Clerk. This time I'd like to call on our chaplain, Commissioner Trey Gooch, if you would, please come forward, lead us in prayer, and also immediately afterwards, lead us in pledge of allegiance to our flag and to the Tennessee flag.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, let's go to our Father in prayer, please. Oh Father, we love you and we praise your name, for we know that all good comes from you. And Father, we're so thankful for this beautiful day and all the many blessings that come with it. Father, as we wrap up another fiscal year, we would ask that in the coming weeks, that we take time to rest and to reflect. To reflect on how we have treated each other, on how we have treated the public, reflect on how we have treated our coworkers, our friends, and our family. But most important, may we reflect on how we've treated you. And may we have the insight and the courage to make any changes that we need to make in the coming year. Father, we are so thankful for Jesus, your Son. We love him because he first loved us. And we ask that you would remove our transgressions from us, so that we may be better servants in the Kingdom of God. And it's through Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Three white stars on a field of blue, God keeping strong and ever true. It is with pride and love that we salute the flag of Tennessee. Good morning. It's, uh, this is a big day for our Rutherford County Commission, I'd like to welcome all of our, our visitors, all those concerned about seeing the business of this county commission. Looks like we have a few Boy Scouts in the back, welcome. Like to extend that warm welcome to all those who are viewing over the internet and watching this on our, our Rutherford County TV station as well. We'll go ahead and get started. Madam Clerk, if you would, it's time for roll call.
Commissioner Gammon?
Here.
Mr. Piercy?
Here.
Commissioner Rather?
Here.
Commissioner P?
Here.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes, here.
Jernigan? Commissioner Kush?
Present.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Gurley?
Here.
Commissioner Blair?
Here.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Here.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Dodd?
Here.
Commissioner Phillips?
Rather.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Here.
Commissioner Ely?
Here.
Commissioner Gooch?
Here.
Commissioner Serenyo?
Yes.
F-20, present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum, and now we are prepared to conduct our business of the county. I'd like to call on Chairman Pro Tem, Commissioner Jeff Phillips, for the approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Katrin. I reviewed those minutes, a couple of adjustments that related to an incorrect name, and that has been corrected. I find them to be in order, and move that we dispense with the reading and that they be adopted.
Motion's been made on approval of the minutes, Commissioner Johnson on the second. Any questions? Seeing none, without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Jernigan? Commissioner Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Serenyo?
Yes.
Motion passes, twenty yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we get into Item F, Public Comments, I'd like to take a moment briefly without objection, to say thank you on behalf of the county commission to all of our Farm Bureau ladies who have brought us breakfast and MTSU's chocolate milk this morning. They always show up on this day every year, and make sure that we're fully nourished and have plenty of good chocolate milk and a biscuit and a little fruit, so we, our minds can properly work and pass the budget properly. Thank you, ladies. Commissioner Gooch?
Next year, could you tell them to bring more chocolate milk, because they ran out before I got here?
I guess you all heard that, they want more chocolate milk.
I saw some of them on your back here just drinking it like it was going out of style or something.
Okay, duly noted. Thank you. Next, we have Item F on the agenda, I want, just take the time to recognize them, because I knew they didn't want to stand there for the whole thing, and they were standing in the back, so I wanted to get them before they left. Next on the agenda is Public Comments. Now it's time for our Public Comments. Are there any public comments? Any public comments? Nobody wants to say what a great job we've done this year? Okay, well, we'll accept that as a yes. Okay, we'll, we'll move on to the next item, which is our, I'd like to call on Commissioner Reed for our elections and confirmation. Commissioner Reed, you're recognized at the well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We only have one item of business in elections and confirmations that deals with the election of notaries. Commissioners, there is a listing of notaries that they may be found in your iPad. Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the election of these individuals as Rutherford County Notaries, I so move.
I have a motion, is there a second? Second, Commissioner Cook. Any questions? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Serenyo?
Yes.
Motion passes, twenty yes.
Motion passes, thank you, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have a resolution to approve the, yes?
Don't mind.
Commissioner Phillips?
We won't meet again until August.
Yes, sir.
I think we probably need to announce the election of our chairman, for temporary election of our chairman for August, and then be confirmed in September. So I think that probably needs to be announced today, since we won't meet again until August. And with that, without objection, I would recommend that we do the same thing for the Chairman Pro Tem, announce a temporary election of the Chairman Pro Tem in August and confirmation in September.
Okay, announcement duly noted, thank you. Next, we have a resolution to approve the consent agenda on Item H. Call on Chairman Pro Tem, Phillips, you're recognized.
I'm sorry, thank you. My, my mind was someplace else, and...
Still on Chairman Pro Tem.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed all of the consent agenda, I find it to be in order, and without objection, I move that the consent agenda be adopted as presented.
Second, we have a motion, on the second, Commissioner P. Any objection? Any comments or corrections? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Jernigan? Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Serenyo?
Yes.
Motion passes, twenty yes.
Motion passes. Next, Item I, under unfinished business, we have no unfinished business at this time, so that will take us next, the agenda, on the agenda is Item J, Reports by Standing Committees. First report is Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee. Okay, first item on the agenda is Item J-1A. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows, and this is unemployment, and I'm just going to read the totals out, for increased expenditures, $182, $24, $1,565, $198, $3,300, $2,899, $155, $904, and $7,418 from decreased expense from unassigned fund balance. Next is for insurance claims, increased expenditures of $600 for judgments and 200, excuse me, $600,000, and $200,000 for workman's comp, with a decrease in the unassigned fund balance of $800,000. To explain this, this is the amount set by our third-party administrator. Basically, we're not spending this money right now, but we set that aside in case we have a judgment against us, and that money is taken from this account. Resolve this 26th day of June 2020. Mr. Chairman, I so move. I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a second, Commissioner Serenyo, on the second. Any questions or discussion? Any questions or discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Serenyo?
Yes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Okay, our next item is J-1B, and this is actually a continuation of the same as the first resolution, only this is for our ambulance service. Again, this is amount set forth from our third-party administrator. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the ambulance service fund be amended as follows, with increased expenditures for judgments of $100,000, with a decrease of assigned fund balance of $100,000. Resolve this 26th day of June 2020. Mr. Chairman, I so move. Have a motion, and second by Commissioner Reed. Any questions? Any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Serenyo?
Yes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Okay, our next item is J-1C, and this is actually a resolution from the school board to help them end out their books for the year. And basically, this is to pay for meals that were unaccounted for, and I'll go ahead and read this resolution. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general purpose school fund be amended according to the schedules attached heretofore as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolve this 26th day of June 2020. Mr. Chairman, I so move, and if you look on the next page, you'll see the exact numbers there. Have a motion, and a second by Commissioner Allen. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Serenyo?
Yes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Okay, moving right along, Item J-1D. Whereas there is a need to plan, design, and construct and renovate schools due to the growth in the area, and whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education has anticipated the future needs of the school system, whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education desires to proceed with the funding of the construction, equipping, and other costs of the following project at the estimated cost as approved by the various county committees. Laverne Middle School addition, $16,173,640. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the funding for the above-named project is an estimated amount of $16,173,640, be authorized from a future bond issue for the constructing, equipment, and other costs of the project. Resolve this 26th day of June 2020. Mr. Chairman, I so move. I have a motion, Commissioner Blair on the second. Floor is open for discussion or questions. Seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Serenyo?
Yes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is Item J-1E, and I won't be offering a motion on this, although I will read what we've got here, and this is opening the floor for discussion for the Tann Oaks Elementary School. And I'll go ahead and read this, and just a question, is Mr. Brooks here? Mr. Brooks, are you online? Okay, I'll go ahead and read this. Tann Oaks Elementary, on Thursday, May 7, 2020, purchasing and engineering and construction received bids for the site work and construction of the Tann Oaks Elementary School and the off-site sewer construction. After a review of the bids, engineering and construction recommends RG Anderson's bid at $41,602,000 for the site and school, and Williamson Construction Company bid at $722,595 for the off-site sewer. Engineering request moving forward for funding in the amount of $51,524,595. The amounts below include the funding of $9,155,000 approved in March of 2019 for the multi-school campus site and elementary school design architect fees, and a breakdown of that again is RG Anderson Company, $41,602,000, Williamson Construction Company, $722,595, Consolidated Utility District, $850,000, construction-related contracts, $3 million, furniture fixture and equipment of $3,500,000, Brinkley Garcia Architects, $1,850,000 for the total of $51,524,595. Commissioner Phillips?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve.
Have a motion, and a second? That was Commissioner Johnson, or Commissioner Rather, excuse me. Okay, now we're open for discussion.
Let me say that, I don't want to rattle on, but I've got some concerns about spending that money, appropriating that money right now, and I verbalize those at Health and Ed. But there's also some positives that I've been thinking about the last few days that relates to all the work that's gone into this site. I think this is the most coordinated effort we've had in infrastructure with our planning department, Board of Education, and our highway department, and we've worked out some pretty significant obstacles there, and I'm well pleased with that. The cost seems to be more in line with anything that we've done recently, and there are a lot of positives there. The most significant need, and someone that I trust a lot, yesterday told me that they're coming, whether we want them or not, they're coming, and I agree with that. My concerns are still there. I think we're okay this year, but my concerns are for next year and the year after, and I'm convinced that what we do tonight will cause property tax increases over the next couple of years, especially as we get into operation cost and those type of things. That bothers me, because we've been really good at being able to predict the future. Last year, I could not imagine what this year would look like, other than a continue, a continuation of the favorable financial situation that we've been in the last few years. That is not accurate anymore, and that concerns me. I have some concerns about the pandemic that we've been going through, and opening schools this fall, and where all of that's going to lead, what the revenue is going to look like if we have another economic shutdown, how are we going to be able to fund these types of things? Plus, just what our community, our state, and the nation is going through as it relates to social unrest, that bothers me to a degree, and we're not immune from that, we all know it, we've all seen it here in our community, that bothers me. And how will that affect not only our community and our finances, but also the school system as well? I keep, for the last couple of weeks, I keep mulling these things over in my mind, but after spending a good deal of time with some commissioners that I really trust and value their opinion, some of the staff members that I really trust and value their opinion, it is the opinion of those folks, and now the opinion of this commissioner, that we move forward with the construction of that school.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Gurley.
Yes, I likewise have concerns, I think passing this today will pretty much ensure that we'll have a tax increase next year, and probably the next year, so we need to be willing to accept that. I think it's remarkable that we're not having a tax increase this year, due to a lot of hard work by you and our finance director and other staff members. There has been a lot of hard work going into this. The large tax increase that was recently passed by our major metropolitan area can, will pretty much assure that we are going to get more people, we were already getting plenty of people, but we're going to get even more people into Rutherford County. There has been a lot of hard work on, on this, and I commend it. I would say that, I would like to see, and I've been pushing this for several years, I'd like to see the school board and the, and the school system do more work in terms of alternatives to building, buildings, and, and not just come back with, well, you're of alternatives to building buildings and not just come back with, well, you're going to have to do this or this, or we've looked at this in times past, but real hard numbers as to what it means to, if we do something different. I think, you know, of all places, in educational, in education, we should be thinking out of the box. We should use the creativity of our mind to come up with solutions and not keep doing things the same way. But I'm also a realist. I think the people will be coming. We've seen the numbers on these schools. It'll be feeding the schools, and they're already well overcrowded, so based on that, I will probably vote yes.
Commissioner Reed, and then Commissioner Allen.
We keep saying they will be coming. If you'll look at Commissioner Jernigan, where this school will be going, and myself's district, they're here. They're pushing down trees, they're pushing dirt all over the place out there in this western part of our county, right next to the current Rockvale Elementary School. They're in the process of putting in a whole new subdivision in that area. Well over 100 houses will be going in there. Just up the road from it, they're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of maybe 300 back in that way. But just yesterday, as I drove into that complex of the elementary and the middle school and the high school at Rockvale, I think, Mr. Superintendent, we were moving in about three portables in that area right now. And I don't know, ladies and gentlemen, if you've looked at these portables, there are probably, some trailer parks wouldn't let them in there. They're getting in that kind of condition that we have out here now, so we'll be buying new portables at some time, and those things are expensive. And when you look at what this school will do for the Christiana area who are having the same problems with students already there, I know the Rockvale Elementary is already overcrowded. I know the middle school at Rockvale is already to the capacity where we are putting in these schools. This will alleviate some of that problem or help us with that problem, which is very important. And I do understand what the commissioner here has said about the fact of what it's going to cost us, but I remember when I first became a commissioner here, Commissioner Allen, and along with Commissioner Phillips and myself and others, we rode around in vans and buses, looking down in the Smyrna area. We went into schools where we already had students in the library, in the cafeteria. We had them, the one that really caught my attention, we had classes in a boys restroom, and we had gone that far as where we were putting our students. Now, yes, I went to a school that had oil floors, no air conditioning, and we had gyms with Cedar Post where you had to look around them to watch basketball, and we always talk about those days, but those days are not there anymore. And I think it's pretty important that we continue to look at the situation that we're in now and what we're having to do there. But they are here, and there are more coming, and this is something we will have to deal with.
Commissioner Allen?
Ms. Nolan has done a great job counseling this commission on the impact of any and all future borrowings. So for the benefit of the public, would you talk to us a little bit about why this won't affect taxes this year and then the potential future impact?
Primarily because we have built that balance over the years. We have delayed, this fiscal year, we only borrowed for the communications. And if you remember, a couple of years or a year ago, when we were projecting what fund balance was going to do if we borrowed, and we were projecting what this is going to look like if, with the school board's needs, if we were to borrow 90 million every year for the next, you know, three years, what was that going to look like? With projections, sometimes it's, well, it doesn't happen as fast as we think it's, you know, there's all kinds of things. Well, we didn't do it. In the meantime, you know, we've tried to keep our fund balance in the debt service. You know, I like to keep it around 75, 65 is okay. We're sitting at 80% above, you know, sorry, 80% of our fund balance. So we've got cushion in to do it. And then when you look at our debt schedule, it reduces in a year. So we'll be coming back in our next cycle with the requests to borrow, and it is all projects that we've talked about. There might be another, the mayor's talked about it, the One Stop. With all that added in, plus the amount that we would have to borrow for the city schools, we're looking at about $101 million. So figuring $70,000 per 1 million, I'm just doing round figures, 100 million, that's $7 million. So even if we had that 7 million in full in next year's budget, we're still above 65% fund balance. So that's why I'm saying it won't impact us 2021. If the school doesn't, if the schools don't bring anything else, we're great, but you know, the likelihood is they'll be bringing something else. And I think that is what commissioners are saying. It's, you know, we know we're okay this year, but it's that next year being on the operating side plus additional school needs.
That was the point that you made at budget the other night that I heard, which was, it won't be this project that will create a tax increase, it's going to be the next project. So I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, in debt service.
Debt service, yes.
You know, you talk about, and I think this might be from Commissioner Phillips, might be, I'm projecting, it's those needs in our operating funds that you may, had you not been able to shift property tax out of debt service over, you know, that ability. So when you do put this goal, that property tax needs to be left alone. Don't move it.
Other comments? Commissioner Gammon?
I concur with Commissioner Phillips. I had some really concerns before, too. I talked with a couple of the commissioners and some of the staff. I appreciate what Lisa Nolan's doing for us. I want to make a comment that Mr. Spurlock, from listening to him up here during our meeting, Health and Ed, he's aware of where we stand on property tax, and I just pray and hope that we continue as a commission to look at other places to try to get the tax dollar instead of from our citizens. And I'm going to be for this, but I had some commissioners and some staff to talk with me as well. I respect Commissioner Phillips. I've listened to what his comments were on Zoom, and I'm just glad we work together, and I appreciate each and every commissioner here and our staff.
Other comments? Seeing no other comments, we have a motion and a second. Anybody want to hear what the motion is? If not, Madam Clerk? Call the roll.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Kush?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Phillips? Commissioner McAdoo? Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Mr. Gooch?
Yes.
Mr. Serenio?
Yes.
Twenty-one yes. Passes.
I believe we have a resolution. Hang on, just a second. That's the resolution we'll need to pass. Since that passed, I have a resolution that I'd like to add to that, and this has to do with a request that originally came out of our Budget Committee and also from our chairman, Harris. And what this has got to do is, we've requested in the past that Murfreesboro City might forego the monies that we're talking about when we build schools that they also provide students for. And we have heard that they have decided not to build any more schools at this time, and therefore, we're making this request. But along with the request, I don't know if everybody's got a copy of this, I've got a list of schools that Murfreesboro City School students attend, and these are capital projects. And basically, what we're asking is if the city does forego this $9 million that they would get from our bond issue, that we promise that we will build, use that money for these capital projects that are on this list. Anyway, I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Whereas Rutherford County intends to issue general obligation bonds to provide funding for school construction and of the county general capital projects, and whereas the bond issue will include funding in the approximate amount of $9,600,000 to be paid to the city of Murfreesboro as required by law, whereas the Board of Education has identified approximately $9,95,000 in major capital projects, a copy of said capital projects being attached heretofore as Exhibit 1 for middle and high schools in Rutherford County. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be authorized to send a letter to the city of Murfreesboro, along with a certified copy of this resolution requesting that the city of Murfreesboro decline acceptance of their share of the Rutherford County's next bond issue, resolve this 26th day of June 2020. Mr. Chairman, I so move. Have a motion, and second by Commissioner Blair. Discussion. Mr. Harris?
Mister, I ask Mr. P, Chairman P, to bring this up. I'm under the firm belief, and I've was told this by a very wise man, somebody I respect very much, that if you do not ask, it's a guaranteed no. So we have over, just on HVAC alone, $5,175,000 in repairs that we need desperately to get done. Every budget, and Chairman Allen knows this, Trey will ask for 10 cents on capital projects, and he'll continue to keep asking for that because we had to get this stuff done. I'm looking at the mayor, and I expect our mayor to address this with the city and try to help us with some of these projects in which they go to our schools. So I brought this up on that, and I hope that you will vote on this, and I hope you approve this motion and resolution.
Other discussion on the resolution. Commissioner Rather?
I have a question. Does anybody know approximately how many city students go to Rutherford County school?
Around 15%, around the whole population is city schools, population of kids.
And that's the elementary?
A-6.
A through 6, otherwise it's 100% after that, right?
Right, after, I mean, 7 through 12 is 100% everybody, county schools.
Other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this is.
Commissioner Stevens. Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a great idea. When we borrow money for elementary schools or for 6th grade in our middle schools, we have to give 15% of that money to the city of Murfreesboro. So on this bond issue, essentially, the taxpayers of Rutherford County will be sending a blank $9 million check to the city of Murfreesboro. And that, to me, is just absolutely repugnant. And the people that should be the most upset about this are the citizens of Murfreesboro because they're going to be paying for the bonds as county taxpayers. And then, when we have to actually do the repairs on these schools, they're going to be paying for that again. So I hope everybody in Murfreesboro will contact their council member and ask them to support declining that money and using it for these capital projects. That $9 million is going to go toward putting HVAC systems at Barfield Elementary, Blackman High School, Blackman Elementary, Daniel McKee, Holloway, Oakland High School, Segal Middle. It's going to go toward bleachers and seats at Riverdale High School, Oakland High School, Blackman High Auditorium, Blackman Middle Auditorium, major roofing projects at Blackman Elementary, Daniel McKee, Holloway, McFadden, and Segal High School, a water line replacement, Central Magnet School, and then some restroom work at Oakland and Riverdale. So this is going to be a great benefit for the taxpayers of Murfreesboro if their council will decline this money. It's going to go toward funding schools where their students go to middle and high school and even some of the elementary school. So this $9 million, if Murfreesboro declines, the money will go toward this construction. If they take the money, they can use it for whatever they want to, and the county taxpayers just gave them the blank check. We need to look at how we can address this in the future with our state legislature. This isn't something that we came up with. This is in our private act. When we borrow the money, we have to send Murfreesboro 15%. And we need to look at how to get that changed. But that's why this came up. If we don't ask them to give us the money back to put toward these capital projects, then they can use it for whatever they want to, is my understanding, and I don't think that's right. So I hope that all of you will support this, and I hope that we will all contact the Murfreesboro council members and ask them to return this money for these school projects.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman?
Commissioner Allen?
I just wanted to follow up with Commissioner Stevens' point, which is, the way things are set up currently, he's correct, we would be handing the city of Murfreesboro a blank check that they can use for whatever they would like, where when we borrow funds, we're obligated to use them for capital improvement. So the thing that I really like about this list is that we're not asking them back for a blank check. We're committing accountability to these projects, so they can see exactly what it is that they're getting. So to me, that's a great opportunity for partnership, and I really hope they do end up taking us up on it.
Thank you. Other comments? Questions on the resolution? Seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Mr. Serenio?
Yes.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Motion passes. Okay, before we move on, Commissioner Gurley made a comment a while ago I wanted to address, and basically, he was asking the school board to look for some alternatives. And I wanted to point out that something new this year that the school board has offered, and that's online schooling. I think it's, is that $100,000 that we started that program with? But basically, this could be, this is actually going to give parents a choice. Some of them that might want to try to homeschool or private school, they'll be able to look at this, and you know, maybe this is something that can expand in the future, especially, you know, we've got a lot of people that are extremely worried, and for good reason, about COVID-19 and having their kids in school. So you know, this is an alternative for those people to have a choice, and I want to personally commend the school board, the superintendent, for offering this. Having said that, I'll move on to our next item, which is J-1F, and this is the resolution authorizing the tax levy in Rutherford County, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020. And I'm not going to read all of this, but I will read the first section here. Section 1 be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, assembled in regular session on the 26th day of June 2020, that the combined property tax rate for Rutherford County, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020 shall be 2.2194 on each $100 of taxable property, which is to provide revenue for each of the following funds and otherwise conform to the following levies. Okay, the general, county general fund is 0.5353 cents, the ambulance service fund, 0.0718 cents, the highway fund, 0.0099 cents, general purpose schools, 1.0474 cents, education capital projects fund, 0.0750, and debt service, 0.48 cents, for a total of 2.2194. That is the current tax rate, and if this passes, will be the tax rate continuing for next year. Now, Sections 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10 actually tell you how the local revenue is allotted for each one of these, and you can read that at your leisure. But, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make the motion for approval, resolve this 26th day of June 2020. I so move. Have a motion, second. Commissioner Harris and others. Floor is open for discussion. No discussion? Without objection. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Kush?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips? Mr. McAdoo? Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Mr. Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Serenio?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, final item this morning is item J-1G. It's a resolution making appropriations for the various It's a resolution making appropriations for the various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Rutherford County, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020 and ending June 30th, 2020. Section 1 be it resolved by the Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee on the 26th day of June 2020 that the amounts hereafter set are hereby appropriated for the purpose of meeting the expenses of various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Rutherford County, Tennessee for the capital outlay and for meeting the payment of principal and interest on the county's debt maturing during the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020 and ending June 30th, 2020, according to the following schedule. And I'm not going to read each item under, but I will go to the major headlines and give you the totals. On the general fund, we're talking about 113 million, 286,299 dollars. For the Rutherford County Economic Development, the total is 200,580 dollars. For our Solid Waste and Sanitation Fund, it's 5 million, 764,908 dollars. For our Ambulance Service Fund, the total is 16 million, 493,068 dollars. Our Special Purpose Fund total is 5,000 dollars. The Drug Control Fund is 502,000 dollars. The Highway Fund total is 10 million, 988,050 dollars. And the General Purpose School Fund is 421 million, 721,569 dollars. Our Central Cafeteria Fund is 21 million, 357,266 dollars. Our capital, Education Capital Projects Fund is 7 million, 483,66 dollars. And our Debt Service Fund is 54,280 dollars, excuse me, 54 million, 280,350 dollars. I'm not going to read each section after that, basically telling where this money is going. For instance, section 14 tells where the nonprofits get their money. But anyway, resolved this 26th day of June 2020, Mr. Chairman, I move that this be adopted.
I have a motion for adoption on appropriation resolution. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Johnson and others. Floor is now open for discussion or questions. Seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Fish?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrino?
Yes.
21 yes.
Motion carries.
Chairman, I've got a motion under other business. Is it okay to continue that?
Without objection. Chairman has another item.
Okay, what this is at our last budget meeting, we've had some cleanup items, so we don't run negative balances over the end of the year. Of course, we've seen this in budget, but be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows, and this is all under unemployment compensation, and I'm just going to read the totals here. $31,000, $1,361, $1,507, $255, $168, $1,186, $2,878, $231, increased expenditures, and we'll have a decreased expense of $7,617. Resolve this 26th day of June 2020, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Kush. Discussion, questions? Seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrino?
Yes.
21 yes. Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, before I step down, I just wanted to, again, thank everybody involved with this year's budget, especially helping me get through this, starting with the mayor, deputy mayor, our finance director, and a deputy finance director, and of course, our commissioners that serve on budget, and the rest of you too. But anyway, thank you for a good year.
Wait a minute, Commissioner, there's two more. Two more, two more.
Oh. I'm sorry, I folded back in.
Wait, that, flip that next page.
All right, the next is the...
No, wait, wait, flip that next page. That one.
Okay, sorry about that. This is also under other business. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the ambulance service fund be amended as follows. Other local health services, increased expenditures for overtime, $5,000, for pensions, $510, and a decrease expenditures of part-time personnel of $5,510. Resolve this 26th day of June 2020, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Reed? Questions? Commissioner Rather? Okay. Okay, he was just waving. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Serrino?
Yes.
20 yes, motion passes.
Okay, maybe this is the final one, unless I've got another page stuck behind here. Be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the debt service fund be amended as follows. Increase revenues for bond proceeds of $45,015, increase expenditures of underwriters discounts of $45,015. Resolve this 26th day of June 2020, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion. Second, Commissioner Serrino. Discussion, comments? Seeing none, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen? Yes. Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Serrino?
Yes.
20 yes, motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members, that brings us to item number 2, Health and Education Committee, Community Care, Rutherford County, Resolution of Appreciation. Commissioner Allen.
Mr. Chairman, I had asked Commissioner Reed, he does such a lovely job with these, I had asked him to read that on my behalf. I actually have a cough, so I knew he'd do a much better job.
He is eloquent in his reading. Okay, I appreciate that comment, I sure do. Before we begin, Russell Cothran, are you out here in the crowd this morning? All right. Before I do start, though, I'd like to ask a couple of the board members of our community care to please stand, so Commissioner Cook, I'd like for you to stand, and I think Doug Doleary back here. These two individuals serve on our board out there and do an excellent job. I know Ms. Cook, I don't know how many years you have served on that board, but she has always brought that report, I know, before the Health and Education, and she's quite proud of that facility out there and what they do, and we appreciate what you do for us. 25-plus years there, and I know you've just began, really, five years there, so we do appreciate what you do there. We have a resolution, and if you'd like to look at that on your iPad, it is there. Resolution of recognition and sincere appreciation for the employees of Community Care of Rutherford County. Whereas Rutherford County is fortunate to have dedicated and committed employees at Community Care of Rutherford County, and whereas every employee limited and adjusted daily exposures to protect all residents and fellow staff to prevent the spread of COVID-19, and whereas the nursing department went above standard of care to assess every resident with vitals twice daily for symptoms of COVID-19, and whereas housekeeping performed extra disinfection rounds on all high-traffic areas to keep residents and staff safe, and whereas the activity department modified the entire activity calendars to enrich patients' lives while isolated on each unit and increased one-on-one visits, and whereas the dietary department managed delivery all residents' meals to each unit and increased cleaning and sanitary precautions while dealing with COVID shutdown, infection, deliveries, and shipments, and whereas all management adjusted all schedules and to help sew over 200 masks, clean, assist with patient care, activity, and staff appreciations, and whereas maintenance adjusted and performed extra efforts to make sure the facility had all their needs taken care when shipping and ordering was down. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners and the mayor, that we hereby recognize and extend this resolution of recognition and sincere appreciation to the employees of Community Care of Rutherford County for outstanding performance and dedication in caring for the residents at Community Care of Rutherford County. Resolve this 26th day of June 2020, Mr. Chairman, I so move. I have a motion. Commissioner Cook, one of the board members, on the second discussion on the resolution. Without objection, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrino?
Yes.
21 yes, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, we still like one signature of signing the resolution, and we'll ask that Commissioner Stevens comes in and sign that, and we'll get that on out to the amendment.
Great, okay. Thank you so much, Commissioner Pettis. Members, that brings us to item number 3, Property Management Committee, no report.
Mr. Chairman...
Commissioner McAdoo, you recognize?
I would like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and hear from our deputy director, Steve Salin, because we got an important auction coming up, and we will not meet again before this auction. This property that we are talking about, we couldn't even give it away a couple of years ago. Now it's one of the hottest items in Rutherford County. I'm even getting calls on, everybody getting called on this property, so I think that each commissioner should be familiar with this auction that's coming up, so I so move.
I have a motion, suspend rules to allow Deputy Mayor Samlin to come forward, give us an explanation on this. Commissioner McAdoo, is there a second? Suspend the rules, got a second? All in favor of suspension of rules signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Commissioner McAdoo, I believe about two years ago, it was going to cost us about $300,000 to tear it down.
When you put it and $200,000, just tear a property?
Yeah, and plant grass. Okay, so, Mr. Salin, you recognize?
Mr. Chairman, county commissioners, I didn't really hear the question very good back there, but we are having an auction Thursday, July 30th, 2020 at 1:00 p.m. We're conducting our look at the property right now, the 24th, 25th, and 26th. Today is our open house. We've had about a dozen folks in there right now. About eight of them are really good potential type buyers, the others are just kicking tires and just wanting to see the building and the safes and all that. But we've got flyers, we've got packets that will be given out the day of the auction. We're giving them out to those in the open house. We've got everything on there, got a little bit of history. I've got a flyer for you, I'd be glad to give you one here before you leave today. The bank building, 22 North Public Square, coin building is 124 North Maple Street. We've got a little bit of history on those. If you'll go to our website at rutherfordcountytn.gov/auction, it's got a drone flyover where our potential buyer can see the roof and the condition of it, and the side and the back and the rear and everything, and then actually, we actually go inside for a virtual tour, which is pretty neat, and goes from office to office and around. You see the safes and you see the condition of the building and this and that. So take a look at that. In our terms, we put down 10% down day of auction pending approval from Rutherford County Commission on August 13th. That's the, we'll have the auction on the 30th, we'll hold the bids, put the contract in, or have the contract, and then we'll bring it to you as full commission on your August 13th full commission meeting, and you'll approve or deny the bid, and if you approve, then we'll go forward, and the buyer will close owner before September 14th. Yes, ma'am? No, it just comes to full commission, full commission for approval. Good question, Commissioner. It's Zoned Central Business District, so we put the information there to go to planning, Murfreesboro, or then give the phone numbers, so they can look up all the potential things that they can do in that zoning, or in that zoning CBD, Central Business District. We've also given the square footage, plenty of pictures online, we've given the information from the consultants that have actually come in and looked at it for mold, asbestos, and radon, and so all those things are in there. We've got plenty of information as far as all the utilities and what they consist of, heat and air, and so forth, so on. So, did I answer your question? I think that's what it might have been, but I was wondering. Any other questions? Be glad to answer anything. I'll give you a flyer, put this thing out however you can. You may know of somebody that might be interested.
Commissioner Dodd?
Commissioner Dodd?
Yeah, do, repeat that website, because I just pulled it up. The drone shot is really incredible. It's a good look of Murfreesboro, and anybody that wants to entertain the site, repeat that website, please.
Yes. It's rutherfordcountytn.gov/auction, and it should take you right to the site and pull it up and go through all the different steps there. And if there's any potential buyers, send them our way. We've got plenty of numbers here for you to contact the mayor's office, my personal number's on there, too, to contact, and we'll take them through, even though the day's the last day for reviewing the building and walkthrough, but if we got a potential customer, we'll take them all the way up through day of auction.
I have a question.
Question.
I'm just wondering if we do sell that and sell it, where will you be able to do your next country video?
Well, since my first country music video, my price has gone way up, and so we haven't negotiated any other videos at this time. No autographs, please.
Thank you, sir. I'm very encouraged about the excitement that this auction is bringing. It's very rare that Rutherford County, this commission ever sells anything. We're always buying property or giving it away, so there's a lot of excitement. I know of several of the very interested parties, they keep on calling, calling, wanting to know when we're going to sell it, when we're going to auction it, et cetera. One wants to, that I have personally talked to, wants to tear it down and build apartments and retail on the first floor, parking in the basement. One wants to keep it, restore it, put a restaurant, put wine cellar in the old vault, rooftop bar. Everybody, there's a lot of different ideas, which is really encouraging, but the main thing is that we're not sitting there letting it just continue to deteriorate. We're putting it back on the tax roll. And I think that's what the citizens expect, and I think it will help the downtown area in conjunction with what the city is doing with the old First Methodist Church property, and then Pinnacle will be raising their building right behind there and putting in a newer, smaller building of where their bank is with more parking. So this whole downtown area is getting ready to really explode, and we're excited about it. Commissioner Cook?
A few of us know that we had county commission over there when we were remodeling the courthouse.
Well, that's true. I remember having meetings in that front panelled area that belonged to Mr. Elam, I believe, years ago. So excited about this opportunity. Next, members, we have Public Safety Committee, no report. Public Works and Planning Committee, no report. Steering Legislative Government Committee, no report. Item number seven, members, is local government support grants, if you will. This information is on your SharePoint. Let me give you a little history on this local government support grant, and I would like to bring that before you today to look for some direction. Back in March, after COVID broke out, Governor Lee introduced a proposal to help all cities and all counties across the state. So all cities and all counties will be getting a check before the end of this month, and the money being appropriated, so it's really kind of a windfall coming to the county. The original breakdown was that Rutherford County was going to get $3 million, and when the bill actually was being discussed last week before the General Assembly signed it died, Senate Bill 2931 and House Bill 2922, it went to Conference Committee. The restrictions on that bill were stripped. Chairman of Finance, Ways and Means, in the Senate, Senator Bo Watson from Hamilton County, made the motion to strip all of that information as far as the restrictions of the money and how it would be spent, leaving that up to the local governments to spend it how they feel they need it, because they are elected by the local constituents. So as they were going through that, they felt that, looking at Davidson County and Nashville, somebody had plugged the numbers in for both, because Metro is unique in that it's a metro. So they stripped some of the money out from Metro, redistributed by 94 counties, and we came out looking very good in the redistribution of those funds. So our local support grant that we should be receiving this next week is $3,786,436. That's almost $4 million that will be coming to us. So, that in mind, I started working with our facilities and maintenance director, Ben Mackin, started talking to others, and even back, let me back up, as we were going through the budget process, I, like with Sheriff Fitchu, knowing that we were going to get $3 million, not $4 million, but back before we even started the process, he had requested in his original budget money for a generator. The generator that we have, the sheriff's department, is over 20 years old, I would assume, Sheriff. They're having a hard time getting parts on that Kohler generator. My concern is, and so is his, is that we can't afford for that generator to go down when you've got 900 inmates out there and not have air conditioning or even heat when the temperature goes down. That would not be a safe environment for having environmentally controlled air inside of that jail. So I asked him at that point in time to pull that out, knowing that we will be getting this grant, and to let us plug it into this grant, so we could get him that generator for the sheriff's department. So if you'll see on your SharePoint, I believe it's on page 15, we've identified some items that are of need for maintenance that have been deferred and deferred, and we didn't want to, even last year, add more pennies to the tax rate. But what happens in government many times is that we defer maintenance, and it ends up costing, when it finally breaks, it costs you twice as much. So here's what we're trying to do, is either replace or maintain or improve some maintenance items. We've identified, at least to this point, $2,259,087. We have the sheriff's department, the historical courthouse here needs a new roof. We spent 20, I believe it was $25,000 for a small patch earlier this year, and we have received a quote. We got another quote in this morning from the last, from the presentation last night, but we got a quote from a company out of Lebanon for $68,000 for a whole new roof with a 15-year guarantee with an optional 10 to Property Management Committee last night. Sheriff's Department, we asked him in his budget to remove the telephone system. They're needing new switches in the telephone system out there. That's listed, you'll see in front of you. The Health Department needs a new telephone system. Goldstein's building needs a new heating and air conditioning system. Our county clerk, they need a new parking lot. We're concerned about people tripping over the asphalt down in Smyrna at that location, because it's all cracked and broken up, so we wanted to go in and put a new layer there. The inner loop on the historic courthouse here, we were told for several years that we were at the top of the list with the city of Murfreesboro, that they would come in and put a new layer inside, and well, come to find out, for whatever reason, we're no longer on their list. So this is, has been listed. Commissioner P had requested for some extrication equipment for the volunteer, all four of our volunteer fire departments, Jaws Alive, the blow-up air mattresses for when you have a turned-over vehicle, they can blow those up and get them off the victim, et cetera, for all four, it's $180,000. Journeys, you know, where Journeys is out on Haley Road, where we take care of, we own that building, where that organization takes care of a lot of our special need citizens here in Rutherford County, needs a new roof. Health Department, we've determined we can, instead of a new roof, we can do a little bit of maintenance every year and take care of that roof. Maintenance building, where Mr. Mackin's located. Heart monitors, not heat monitors, but heart monitors, I see it here, heat monitors, it's heart monitors. Come to find out, in talking to Director Hudgens last night, these heart monitors are $25,000 apiece, and they are, they have a warranty of, they're good for 10 years, okay? All of our heart monitors are expiring this year. Director Hudgens had requested 20 of those at $25,000 apiece. Not knowing what the outcome is going to be between the city and the county right now, I am suggesting that we expend money to buy 10 of those heart monitors at $25,000 apiece until we can resolve the issues on our ambulance service. The thing that's important here is that the ambulance service cannot bill Medicare for the use of those heart monitors if they are past their time of expiration. So that creates some concern. If they are expired, we cannot bill the patient for using an expired heart monitor, which gave me some current concern. I found that out just last night. And so here's a temporary list that I put before you. Some are concerns for me, is that we have a time limit, I think, from at least our roofs and the paving, because both of those items need to be done when we still have warm weather. Asphalt plants will start shutting down after the frost in October. Roofs need to be applied when it's still hot. If we wait until August and we put it out to bid, then we have to go back through purchasing and et cetera, and they may be booked all the way through, whoever we put it out to bid for, it could delay us some. So I'm asking for direction or approval to move forward on some of these items or all the items today, so we can be expedient. It'll still come back before budget in August, but at least let us get started. Commissioner Gurley?
Yes. I would like to make a motion to approve this list with an amendment to item 13 on the heart monitors. I really think it would be prudent to go ahead and spend the other $250,000 to go ahead and get the adequate number of heart monitors that we need to equip our ambulances.
And you want to go ahead and get the 20 as requested?
So I would amend this to list to change the item 13 to $500,000 and approve the list as amended that way.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Discussion? Mr. P?
One thing I want to mention is, as you go through this list, most of the items that you see on this list were pulled out of the budget request from the departments. You know, the one that Commissioner Gurley pulled up, I think you're saying the right thing there. You know, we won't be able to bill if we don't have those monitors. You know, we'll have 20 ambulances in service, I think, regardless of how new developments come across, so I'm in wholehearted agreement with doing this. Two, if we wait on this, and we wait till August to put out the bids, and then the bids will come back in September, and then some of those may be delayed. So we're looking at at least a three-to-four-month delay if we wait on getting these requests out. And two, almost every one of these will be coming back to budget and the full commission in most cases to vote, and all these things have to be bid out, as far as I know, unless there's something in there I missed, I think everything there will have to be bid. Thank you.
Commissioner Dodd?
Thank you. Mr. P, I'm glad you spoke before I did, because you helped some of my discomfort. I feel like we're rushing to some degree, a 3.7 million windfall. We hear about it yesterday at property management, and today we're spending 2.3 million, or some portion thereof, without going through committee. So I'm uncomfortable. I don't see the need to rush with a grant coming from the state to spend a majority of the funds on day one. So I'm very uncomfortable with the vote, and, but it's comforting to hear that some of these have indeed come from department heads, because that was going to be my request, that department heads bring them through public safety, through property management, and through Public Works. So I may concede that point. Another point I want to make is, of this 2 million plus, we have some bids already in hand for some roofs, one of which, the bid on, the estimate on the sheet of paper here is 200,000, the bid came in at 70. And so I'm afraid we're rushing through some of this, a little bit impulsive, and I would rather these items come from committee rather than the mayor's office. So I just want us to contemplate that. I don't think there's a mistake here, but I do have some discomfort, so please contemplate those items.
Thank you, Commissioner Dodd. I don't think that, what I'm looking for is direction to give the mayor's office the ability to go ahead and get it into the newspapers starting Monday, get the information, so we can start bidding these items out. If the quote that we got came in this morning from the presentation last night for the roof, and the gentleman from Kentucky, it came in at $127,000 for the roof, we've, yeah, somewhere in that neighborhood, but the original quote that we had from another company, on a traditional tear-off and put on a modified roof, was $400,000 for this roof. So I'm telling you, we're, now is a good time. I think there's a lot of companies out there that are hungry, that are wanting to get back into business and keep their people going, so I just would hate to delay anything, and if it comes in cheaper than what we estimate, the money's still going to remain in that grant, right?
Yes, and I'm, I think what you're, I'm clarifying, is what you're asking is permission to move forward to bid these projects. It'll be a, we'll come back through to amend budgets and put this money in.
Commissioner Gammon?
Some of these items, I mean, I'm in agreement that these were in the budget items and taken out for the purpose of trying to keep this budget where it's at. And the concern I have, of course, I'm more familiar with the items at the Sheriff's Office Jail and things, I do understand heart monitors and all that. Not only, the thing I want to say about this generator, it's not just air conditioning and heat. You'll have a blackout there if that generator is not.
That's scary, too.
And all the door locks won't work, dispatch, I mean, all this stuff is going to be intermingled. So it's a bigger picture than just heating there for the prisoners, on top of that. I mean, they'll shut down.
I forgot about the electronic door locks.
Lot of manpower work.
Commissioner Gammon?
You might have mentioned it a while ago, but Lisa, you're just wanting approval to move on, and we're not going to have the funds from the state till by the end of July or something like that, is that right?
It's, the funds will be here by July 31. If you look at that document, I mean, we've got time. I mean, I'm agreeing that the mayor needs to move with advertising for these bids, because that is a process in and of itself, much less, you know, getting here. But if you look at the document, it's going to come in, I'm trying to get to it real quick. It is on page, I can't tell you the page, let me just go and do it this way. Well, anyway, it's the one that talks about, is that the funds will be distributed as a direct appropriation grant after July 1. We're hearing that it's coming in before July 31. So the money will be here, but we have to, unless they change all this, we have to have all the funds committed by June 30, 21, either under contract or spent. And then those that are under contract, everything, all the money must be expended by 6:30, 23.
Okay. Mr. Reed?
You know, these, none of these items just come out of the air. If you've sat on a lot of these committees, that, I know I've sat on some of these committees, and some of these sitting in public safety, you've heard these already. We've discussed these quite often weeks ago, just as Commissioner Gammon right there. We, in fact, we've toured our detention center out there and seen the situation that we've got there, and that is something that we're going to have to have, and it's not an inexpensive problem. And then when you're talking about the volunteer fire departments, we went over that, and in the process, we were in the process of getting that information as to what it's going to cost for those volunteers to be able to do what we're talking about right there. And then as far as the ambulance services, as far as what that's concerned there, we're not talking about something just, hey, this is going to be another gadget on our ambulances. This is something that is needed, and this is something that is about to go out of warranty, about to go out of service to protect the citizens. about to go out of service to protect the citizens of this county. Every bit of these things are things we need. I mean, we've talked about this same situation. I think when we talked about our schools, what they're having to do with things, getting needing repaired and whatever, this is your county in the same situation. And this is a situation where all of a sudden, we've had funds that's been made available to us to do this. And what I think, what has been brought to you last evening and what we're looking at right here, this gives us the opportunity to go ahead and start putting those bids out there to get on with it. And I think it's a good opportunity to do this. I know we have an amendment to this, and I think it was a good amendment to do that, to provide those monitors now and to strike while the iron's hot. Everybody keeps quoting somebody that's older than us and what they say there, and I think that's a good idea. I looked in the mirror this morning, and I've become one of those older than us. I think that's the main reason that Commissioner Allen asked me to read this about community care. I'm about to get to that point. But I think this is something we need to be doing. And I think this is, gives us an opportunity to take a look at it and to do this and to go on. And I understand Commissioner Dodd and his concern there, but I think by the method that we will follow in this, I think we'll be okay to work with it and go that away, because it will meet that. I know it'll come before public safety again, as we talk about the volunteer fire department. We want to make sure that's all correct, and we're doing the right things there. The ambulance service right there, we'll work with that. So, I think it's in the right direction that we're going.
Okay. Commissioner Piercy.
I'm kind of in the same boat like Mr. Dodd here. I think we're moving a little quickly on some of this. The weather-sensitive jobs that you have, you'd like to do, I feel like it would be good to move forward with that. But I'd really like to see the other come back to the committees like it should be, because there's really no rush on any of the other. The ambulance, the heart monitors, you recommended 10. Mr. Gurley recommended 20. Is there a resale value on those if their ambulance division split or not?
Director Hudgens, without objection, move to spin the rules. Director Hudgens speak.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, signify, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Director Hudgens.
Chairman, Commissioner, there is a trade-in that will go along with the purchase.
My question was, if we buy 20 and they are not needed, what do we do with them at that point? The mayor recommended 10 based on the fact Murfreesboro is wanting to get into the ambulance service, and you may not need 20. What, if we have 20 new ones and you don't need them, what do we do at that point with them?
That's something I'll have to discuss with the vendor. I can't give you, I don't know how to answer it without me looking into that further, sir.
Do you have to the end of the year to buy these?
Yes, sir. I've talked with Medicare, so to speak, and they understand the situation, and I have that time to do that, sir.
On the point, excuse me, on the point of a $250,000 investment that we don't know if we can get our money back on or not, I would really feel comfortable if you'd let the 20 go back to 10 on the heart monitors. My other question, the money that you've quoted out is 2-point-something million, the grant's 3-point-something, where does the other money land out of the grant?
The difference between the 2.5 and the 3.7, we haven't identified. This is all just come, we've been working since last Friday. We knew that we were going to get to 3 million, okay? So, we've been working on this for several months through the budget process, asking the sheriff to take that out instead of having to come back and look at possibility of a tax increase. We definitely don't want to do that. This 3.7 is a windfall. It's almost 4 cents on the tax rate. So, sometimes governments have a tendency to put off maintenance and not take care of things. I think that if we can expend this, this will help us next year and won't have to have a tax increase, which I'm totally against. But it will allow us to get everything up to par and then just spend a little bit as we go, maintenance-wise, and let Mr. Mackin and his department keep on top of this. And we don't have to get nickel and dime to death of using duct tape and, you know, Gorilla Glue and etc., keeping things MacGyver kind of things that we've been doing in the past. But we will continue to identify, just last night, or late yesterday afternoon, Michael back there at PAWS called and identified $175,000 for new HVAC, something we've been repairing out there for a long, long time. His HVAC at PAWS is need a repair. We'll come back to you in August and continue to add to this list.
Will the difference in the money come back through committees, or will it be at your discretion?
Yes, sir. Oh, no, sir. Nothing's in my discretion.
The difference will come back through the committees?
Yeah. All I'm doing is identifying to, I don't have a vote. I'm putting it before you to make that decision.
Aware of that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Gurley.
Thank you, Carl.
Yes, I really don't think our ambulance service is going away. Even if Murfreesboro pulls out, you know, we could use...
It's not going away.
It's not going away. We could use three, four more ambulances up in the north end of the county. We have about as much population up there as Murfreesboro has. I see calls all the time where seven, or six, or eight are going well outside their zone, or somebody else is being called up to the standby or respond into the zone. And so, if we have extra ambulances and so on, I think they're just going to get redistributed. All these areas where we just talked about, like the school, the expansion out into those areas, they're being built out into Christiana, Buchanan, Rockville area. We don't have an ambulance service out there. You have to go from Murfreesboro, from what, Station 3 to Eagleville? You don't have an ambulance station in between there, right?
Currently.
Currently, right. And so, I don't think if we go ahead and spend and keep our state, you know, the last thing I want is, it'll take a while to get these, get people trained on the new monitors and everything. I don't want an ambulance responding with an expired cardiac monitor. I'm like Pettis, you know, I'm a year older than Pettis, actually. And so, you know, if somebody's got to respond to my house, I want them to have, the ambulance to have a decent monitor. That's not an auxiliary piece of equipment or something we want to have. That is a must-have on your ambulance. So, like I said, I think, you know, we're going to wind up needing those, forget about what Murfreesboro does, we're going to need them, because the growth in the other areas of the county outside the city limits of Murfreesboro.
Yes, sir. Prior to the city bringing up this conversation, I've been looking at last cast's Levarne. And of course, we've had plans for the Rockville area, but you know, actually in my eight-year plan, I've been wanting to expand more into Kestrel and the Rockville and maybe even out closer to the Triune-Nolansville area. I've had a lot of plans that I was hoping I could come to before the committees and show you the vision of it and how it would work. And if the city does it, and as long as this committee still has faith in me, I will rebuild this ambulance service and will be just as good as we are now. And that's Warren Matt with it.
Discussion on the amendment. Commissioner Allen.
My question was not necessarily about the amendment. I do have a question about this list, so if you'll read it, I can...
Any other questions on the amendment? Commissioner McAdoo?
On the heart monitors, you're not going to go out at the end of this month and buy 20 at one time, are you? You going to spread it over a purchase period or?
Are, I know you've gotten a couple of quotes. Director Hudgens is the striker, I think, is the one you're looking at. Is it on statewide contract?
I believe so, sir. I'm just going off memory, just off the top of my head. But what I'll do is, the vendors will let me try theirs. And my experts are the paramedics on the ground who will actually be using them. And what fits best and what's financially best will be determining factor which ones we choose. I'm not, I don't have any particular favorite one. I've got to do what the paramedics want, because they're the ones that's using it.
Purchasing these heart monitors over a period of time?
Yes, sir. I can, if I could get 10 now, with the security of knowing that I could get more, if the city doesn't go through with this, that would be a real comfort level for me.
Based on that, I am going to support this, because our ambulance service, like you say, it's not to the point where it need to be with the growth that we got in the county. So, therefore, I don't care really if Murfreesboro do what they're going to do or not. We need these monitors. You brought up growth in Christiana. All over the county, we're growing. So, I don't see where we're not going to benefit from going ahead and allocating this money for 20 heart monitors.
Commissioner Johnson.
This is nothing for Carl or whatever. Just a point of clarification. Okay, basically, we're getting a grant of $3,700,000.
Yes, sir.
Okay. What you have listed is projection, how to spend this. This does not necessarily mean that come July 3rd, that the mayor's going to be running down the street, helter skelter, throwing out money for this, that, and the other. It's going to be all coming back through the proper channels, through the committees. And we don't have the wherewithal to sit up here and cherry pick what needs to be done and what does not need to be done. And to allay anybody's fears about the $3 million going to just be thrown, you know, out the window. This is going to be all through, back through the committees. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, okay?
Yes, sir. They'll come back in August. So, all right, need a little clarification. Any other questions for Director Hudgens on the heart monitors? We'll come, okay, thank you, Director. We'll come back into session. So, there was a motion, have a motion to...
A motion? A motion to accept the list.
And with the amendment, did we have a second on the amendment? And we had a second on the amendment to go on the heart monitors from 10 to 20. Now, we need to vote on the...
The motion was to accept the list with the exception to amend the 10 monitors up to 20, and that was entirety of the motion.
Okay.
Mr. McAdoo has made a motion to call this.
Okay. Everybody understands the motion? Okay. Commissioner Allen.
I just had a couple of questions, since we are going to be talking about the whole list. I do recognize most all of these projects that were pulled out of budget, so I'm comfortable that all these things need to be done. I just wanted a couple of points clarified. There's $405,000 that are going, that's going towards the historic courthouse. Is any of that new money, or is that money that is being replaced? Like, we're paying existing bills, and now we're using this checkbook instead of our checkbook. Is that right? Or is there, are there new projects that are added to this? Projects.
That's correct.
Which way is correct?
Well, I mean, because we've, the things that have been done has already been committed. The money's already been committed in current budget.
Okay, so this is...
Or the project.
This is an additional $405,000 for the historic courthouse? I guess I thought we'd already budgeted for roof?
Roof and interior.
And interior. Okay, so the only new money is the $55,000 for the paving? We hadn't planned for that?
No.
Because we planned for the roof and we planned for the interior?
No. Oh.
There are additional items in the historic courthouse that wasn't in the last project with Williams Restoration, okay? If you go right up here in Megan's office, there are no ceiling tiles because of the leak. They were never in the budget under that contract with Williams Restoration to replace those. We have a lot of ceiling tiles that need to be replaced. Tab Beatty has requested, since the restoration was completed, he'd like to have some new carpet. There's new carpet been requested.
That's fine. I don't need, yeah, it's fine. I just was trying to keep track of, how was that money, was it new money, was it...
This, to me, is new money. It's new money in a project.
Are these new expenses? I guess was my question.
Yes.
So, these are new expenses? Okay. And then on the volunteer fire equipment, we had a lot of discussion about compatibility of equipment. Are you going to resolve that issue when you, when we let that out to bid? Because there was some concern between...
Well, I believe, Commissioner P., we worked through that compatibility as far as the equipment is concerned, and we're going to buy the same equipment. We got the quote. It's going to be the same equipment. And then Chief Farley said that he would do work with the volunteer fire departments in the training of how to use those jaws of life, etc. Commissioner P.
It's fine. I don't need a lot of information on that. I just wanted to follow up, just because I knew that was a big issue for us. That was one of the...
Commissioner, Chief Farley has put out some bids, and it was actually 180...
183,000, I believe, is what we got yesterday.
I'd gave him 180 as a rough, that's to cover all four departments, and that'll take care of, Mr. Farley will be taking care of the training. And soon as we get that equipment, they'll start running their training, so we can provide that service.
And you had mentioned PAWS, but before you did that, I had already written them down. I thought there was some big item that we had pulled out of their budget that we had hoped to be covered by grant. I didn't know if it was this grant or another grant, but I want to make sure, you know, because Michael is so frugal, and, you know, that's one of those places that, you know, kind of last in line a lot of times. I want to make sure we did take care of PAWS. And then also, I didn't know if there are any big capital improvement projects that the jail needs, because I know that jail is getting old, and we've been doing a lot of, you know, there's a lot of things along the way, but I just didn't know if there's anything additional.
I believe the sheriff told us that, he and Preble told us, that we should be completed with the Siemens project on a lot of those capital needs that we financed earlier in the year. You'll see the new phone system in here for $125,000 that was pulled out of their budget. We've put that into this list. Otherwise, we would be, that would have been in what we voted on as far as our tax levy is concerned. But here, we're going to be able to pay for it through this grant.
Mr. Chairman? Over here.
Commissioner Reed, sorry.
We've had a motion made to call for the question. Commissioner McAdoo did that. It's not debatable.
Read the motion, please. Madam Clerk.
The motion, what, the motion is to accept the list as recommended with the exception...
Hold a little closer.
Sorry. The motion was to accept the list with the amendment of item number 13, and that was to buy 20 monitors instead of the 10 monitors.
All right, and the question's been called. I need a second on the question being called. And is there a second? Okay, we have a second on the, on calling of the question. All in those in favor of calling of the question signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Okay, motion carries back on the, the motion as amended. With that, there's a motion with the amending the value in that. Okay. Question's been called. Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P.
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Gajernigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrino?
Yes.
21 yes.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. Commissioner Dodd?
Yeah, my no on the call. The question was because the motion did not state in any way whatsoever that any of this would go back to budget or any committees. That was a verbal part of the debate, and so I'll take it on the honesty and trustworthiness of all of us that these will...
I believe I did make that comment, Commissioner Dodd.
No, but it wasn't part of the motion. So I just, I don't know if we needed it in the motion.
Well...
If it's in the minutes, I'm good.
Yes, sir. It's in the minutes. It's, it's been recorded. It'll go back to the committee. Commissioner Johnson.
I think we're all honorable people here, and I think our words should be our bond. And the mayor confirmed that this is going to go through the process, so I'm not going to lose any sleep over it.
Okay, members, thank you. That motion passes. Now, we have one other item to come before us is a cops grant. I'm going, it, it's a timely issue when this grant came in for our cops grant, and I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Finance, Ms. Nolan, to explain this grant because of the time sensitive. It's due, we have to accept it by July the 9th. It is a sharing grant, is not fully funded, so I'll let, I'll let Ms. Nolan explain this. And it just came in, okay?
We, we got the documents yesterday, which was after budget. Now, I believe Preble and Sheriff notified that, notified public safety that we were awarded the grants. We awarded five positions, but we didn't have the documents to flow through. We got them yesterday. But the situation is that it has to be, we have to accept the grant by August 9th. So it's after, it's August, August 9th. But it, so that's after budget, but before full commission. So this is unusual, but this has been an unusual year. So for next year, I guess this is what I would hope to get from y'all, is that y'all will accept and, and support funding the local match on this grant so that when it comes through budget, this can go through budget, and then after budget, have the authority to sign the documents to accept. Again, the grant was for five people.
Including benefits.
The total amount that we're, you know, we'd be adding to the budget is $299,987, with 208,333 being the maximum awarded, I mean, the grant amount. Our match would be 91,654. This is a three-year grant that we will receive. This is for the total now, what I'm giving you is 625,000 would be the grant award. Our match would be 292,419.
I'm sorry, use your microphone, please. I'm just asking about the five people. I know you mentioned that we want, this grant is for five people.
Five patrol officers.
Patrol officers, thank you.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes, does this include equipment and so on? This seems awful low number.
I think it's just people.
So at some point in time, we're going to have to fund equipment and so on on this too.
Sheriff Fitch, you, you have any comments you want to, want to make? If you, it's our motion to suspend the rules to allow the sheriff to come forward and ask any questions. Motion, second. Suspend the rules, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Sheriff Fitch, you recognized in the well? Questions?
So, Lisa...
Commissioner Kush.
While he's on his way up, in rough terms, it's a $600,000 grant for three years?
In total.
In total?
In total.
Okay, and we have to match approximately 50% of that?
It's, it's really a third.
A third.
We're, we're matching a third.
Okay, thank you.
I understand, Rod, if I may.
Yes, sir.
It comes out about a 65, 35, is that correct? Is how it, how it works out. It's a 625,000 grant for three years, which affords us five certified officers. And I'm sorry, I didn't hear the other question.
Equipment.
Equipment.
The equipment will, that will be an additional expense.
This is salary and benefits, I believe.
Salary and benefits, and the equipment, if I'm right, Preble comes out of our budget, so.
Other questions for the sheriff? Commissioner Gammon?
Sheriff, she said patrol officers. I don't want to get technical or anything, but is there any, I know sheriffs don't do patrol, but it's for a, for five deputies.
If deputies, yes, I'm sorry.
It's for five certified deputies.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Which deputies, all encompassing patrol, SRO, into that, but these officers would be in the patrol division.
So cops stand for constable on patrol, and we don't have those anymore either, right? Thank you. Yes, sir. Commissioner Gammon?
I don't have any questions for the sheriff, and I know what his needs are, and, and he also knows the years he's been down there, that these grants have really helped pick up what Sheriff Sauce has up. I don't have the number in front of it, I know at one time I kept up with it. We've had more than 100 grant people through grants, and you'd have probably 100, almost 100 less people without them, so.
If you're, if you're recall, Commissioner, back during the budget process, the sheriff and Preble had, had, when, we didn't know where our budget was going, and we asked every department head and elected official to cut their budgets. They came back and they chose to go with, to round out six more employees in their booking division, right? And he sacrificed some of the deputies that he had requested, so this will help backfill that request into his budget.
Point of clarification, we asked for 15 deputies in our original budget request, and we backed those 15 out. We did and we're aware of this grant, which we were applying for, and we asked permission to do that. Original was hoping for 15 out of the grant, and then, of course, once the grant request came back, they did grant us five, so.
I think this also went through committee process, if I recall properly.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Chairman Reed, and the committee had approved to move ahead with it. So I'm at the point, if I can, to, I'd like to make a motion to accept it and move on, fund it, support. This is just for the employees themselves and, and I guess whatever the benefits are and stuff on top of that.
So we have a motion to accept the grant. Is there a second? Second, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner McAdoo. Questions, comments? Commissioner Kush?
Does the motion specifically need to say that we give the Budget Committee authority to act on it in our...
I think if you accept, I mean, I'm sitting here thinking, if you accept the grant, if you agree to accept the grant and you agree to fund it...
I think this was...
That the amendment to fund will come in August. They've got sufficient revenues, I mean, sufficient appropriations right now, you know, to get them through the year. We're just starting at the beginning of the year. The amendment will come to budget and then back to the full commission.
Yeah. Does everybody understand that? It will come back through the budget process and full commission. Okay, any further discussion, questions?
Mr. Chairman, this is Robert Stevens. I have a question.
Commissioner Stevens, you recognize?
So this is for three years, and after that, we have to pick up the full amount for the salaries. Is that right?
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's correct.
I'm always really hesitant to add employees with grant money, especially one that's three years, because what we're doing is we're telling the next commission that they're going to have to figure out how to pay for this. And I understand that they need deputies, but tying their hands with this, I'm not sure is, is the best idea. If it was equipment or a one-time purchase, I would be very in favor of it, but I've always been very hesitant to add a bunch of new employees with grants because it ends up sticking the next commission with a tab, and I don't think that's the best way to plan and budget. So I'm going to vote no for that reason. I'm very supportive of what he's trying to do, and I hope that we could look at it and try to find ways to add those deputies over time, but I just don't think that using somebody else's money to grow our offices is the best thing to do. So I'm going to vote no.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. That is a good point. However, if, if we recognize the fact that he cut 15, we only gave him five, here we're giving, this grant will give the additional five and still not get him to what he requested this year. And we just finished talking about the amount of growth that's coming into our schools, what's going to come in from Nashville, et cetera. His needs going to be there in three years for this additional five. So it'll be back before us in some form of a budget request. So I think we should step up and take advantage of the free money, at least for three years, as much as possible, at least two-thirds of it. Commissioner Phillips?
Just one particular comment. We've agreed to build a new school and staff that new school, and that's millions of dollars, and we're talking about thousands of dollars here for public safety. And in my mind, that is the biggest issue facing this county in the foreseeable future. So to me, this is equal to even more important than building schools. I don't see how we cannot accept a grant, even though at some point in time, we're going to have to pay the piper. We did that with firefighters, emergency responders, and it worked out. But if we're going to continue to grow, this department is a public safety department that I think this county will utilize in the future more than they've ever used in the past. This is something that I think should, in my mind, even though Commissioner Stevens' point is well-taken, and he's made that point numerous times in the past, I think it's a burden that we will have to say yes to, to adequately fund this department and to position ourselves in a stronger place as time goes by. So I just think that we have to do this. I just think it's something we absolutely, positively have to do. And once again, thank you, Sheriff, for all of the work that you've done, especially the last few months.
Any other questions for the sheriff? Seeing none, we'll come back into session. Thank you, Sheriff. Back on the motion.
Sheriff, can I...
Any further discussion? Seeing none?
Just a clarification to the motion that the mayor has the authority to sign all the grant documents that, that relate to this.
That objection, everybody seems to be in agreement with that. Back on the motion. Seeing no further questions, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P.?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Giernigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
No.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ely?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrino?
Yes.
19 yes.
Motion carries. That brings us to other business before us. Commissioner P., we just did hand breakfast last week. Where you go?
We did have a hand breakfast last week, and it was great, and I wanted to thank everybody for that came out and supported the fire department. But what I want to talk about right now is this piece of paper in my hand that was handed out a while ago. You notice it says auction, okay? Usually, you'll see an auction company name there, but you don't see one there. You know why? Because we happen to have an in-house auctioneer, and that's Deputy Mayor Steve Sandlin. Now, the reason I'm pointing this out is usually when you have an auction, you end up paying about 10% of what you make to that auctioneer. However, Deputy Sandlin is donating his time to our government. So there's 10% of whatever this makes. I'd say that's probably going to pay his salary for a while, maybe even the mayor's salary for a while. But I wanted to personally say thank you, Steve, for doing that for us, and I've heard maybe our trustee...
I think our trustee's volunteered to come and help and kind of bump it up. He has a, an outstanding loud voice without a microphone, so I think he'll get the attention of anybody that's in that room.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Other business before us, Commissioner Blair.
Mr. Chairman, we've patted a lot of people on the back this morning for not having to raise property taxes, and I think we all enjoyed not having to do that. But I would also like to commend Director Spurlock, his Finance Director Bowdery, and the Rutherford County School Board. This is my 14th budget, either as a school board member or as a commissioner, and I've never seen so many lines with negatives on all these different line items. And I would like to commend the school board for being a major partner in us not having to raise taxes each year, and thank them for their effort as well.
Absolutely. Commissioner Kush?
I feel more comfortable behind the lectern than I do standing up on the hand mic. What a year, right? The end of our fiscal year. You know, I thought there might be a little more hoopla when we did not raise the property taxes, but it was awful quiet. You could hear crickets chirping when we did not raise the property tax. But I, I know why, I think at least I know why, is because we have a very tough road ahead next year. The, the COVID outbreak changed our world. It changed the ability for our income on sales tax, which hurt us. It hurt our citizenry. It hurt us personally. You know, I, we're not, this is, this goes out to the constituents and the voters. I'm not a politician. We are not politicians. We are representatives of the people. We're here to do the people's business. And when we see our neighbors that are put out of work because of the virus and business shutting down, and we see our neighbors having to file unemployment, we, we understand that. We feel that pain. And so it was important for us not to raise property taxes, if at all possible. So I just want everybody to know that we have empathy, and we see what's going on. We're not an isolated group. So I just want everybody to understand that. But I do also want you to know that next year's going to be hard. We have big things to hurdle next year. And Mr. Gurley, who had to step out, mentioned early on this morning that he was very surprised how we could not raise our property taxes this year. But we did. We left them on a level basis. So maybe I'd like to declare this hug your commissioner day. I'm not sure, but at least six-foot distance. But again, we, we know what's going on in the real world. We feel everybody's pain. It would have been sad and wrong to try and raise property taxes when there's so many people hurting, so many of our neighbors hurting, and I just wanted to say that. And I want to thank you all for not raising the property taxes. I want to thank Lisa and her committee. I want to thank the mayor. And I want to thank all the committees that we all belong on, because this year, we all had to, to preview the budgets prior, and we all had to make cuts. So I appreciate that, so thank you.
Commissioner Kush? Commissioner Reed?
Ladies and gentlemen, I know all of you are aware of, over the past few weeks, some of the activities we've had right here on the square. And I have to tell you that I've had the opportunity to be here and watch some of this.
this. And what I'm standing up here for is we've talked about some of the things we've approved here for our first responders and those involved. And I've watched the way that they have handled themselves in some of it. And I have to say, well, last Saturday, that I was up here in some of this, the mayor was up here. And unless you're here actually seeing what's going on, and last Saturday, I'd have to say, and I don't, I'm not meaning this in any improper way, but, but Mayor, you might agree with this too, but I saw ignorance on both sides in that situation, in how things are handled, and how things can get out of hand. But I saw our officers step in the middle of individuals and not do it in a harsh, harsh way, but they talked to the people. And they say, you know, you might not ought to be doing this. Why don't you go over here and think about this? Or, hey, let's talk about this and whatever. And I watched that, and I was very impressed with it. And the sheriff may have already left by now, but I just wanted to thank them for the way they did that, to keep things under control. The first protest, I guess is what we'd say there. I looked at some things that was happening in that one right there, and some of you that know me know my feelings toward the animal world or whatever. I've been fortunate to be able to help our sheriff's department and their canine units and whatever, but I noticed our sheriff's mounted patrol. And I looked at our officers out there, and they all had these shields on, but our horses, they were just horses. And I looked at that, and I had seen where there are other patrols elsewhere across the country had had some type of a shield to protect those horses. So after that was over, I went to the sheriff, and I just mentioned to him, I said, is there some way we could protect our horses? And as we discussed it more, just in a sort of haphazard way, I looked at Brett Reed, any of you know that lieutenant on our sheriff's patrol. I just trying to aggravate him a little bit. I said, I know you have an inside source in Smyrna by knowing the mayor. I said, do you know anybody in Nissan that might help us in finding something for our horses? Because if any of you know our horses that we have in the mounted patrol, they're not normal horses. And what got me thinking about this, if you've seen what's happened in Dallas, some of their horses got harmed in some of those protests. They got hit with bricks and things like that, and that bothered me. But he went to Nissan and made a contact. And Nissan took their engineers, the people that make things to make these nice cars and trucks we see out here, took our horses under their care to look and see what they could do for the mounted patrol of Rutherford County. And those engineers developed face shields for our horses. Our horses are basically draft horses. They have large heads. And what they did, they formed that on a five-gallon bucket to fit our horses. And just this week, we, we met with them, and they placed that on our horses. And the horses seemed to like it. So we now have horses that are wearing shades out there. I don't know if you know it or not. But we told them, said, you know, these, these now, due to the fact of Nissan helping us with this, I guess we'll call these the Nissan Titan police horses. And it's just good to see the situation where we, as a county, are working with an industry that turned around to see our need and helped us. And those horses are officers just like the other officers we have out here. So if you have the opportunity to see somebody from Nissan in the future, tell them how much we appreciate them and what that meant to us. Because, you know, when I looked at that, I said, this is a national story. This is not just for us right here. This is somebody from industry coming out and seeing a need, hoping we never have to have that, that they never have to be harmed in any way. But yet, we look out for all our officers out here that's on patrol. But I do want to invite you out to Rockvale, 4th of July. We're having that picnic, starting at 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock. Come out there and get you a hamburger, hot dog, snow cone. Go out there and say hello to the folks. We're going to have some politicians, I think, stopping by, too. But it's the 4th of July, folks. We've been through a lot the last six months. We've done a half a year, and we can't even remember what we've done this half a year. We've been so involved in that. And it'd be out there at the community center on the old Rockvale Road. We invite you to come on out, and let's celebrate America. Free to get in, but it costs you to eat. But, but it'll be the churches that providing the food, and I think you're going to get some really good eating. One other, hang on. I do have a couple of comments I'd like to say. A plug for one of our other local businesses out in Commissioner P's district, out at Hop Springs, I believe. They are having an event after you leave Rockvale, you can, starting at 3 o'clock. There's a, they're going to have several bands out there. It's all going to be $10 for admission. Kids are free to get into Hop Springs. There's plenty of room, 85 acres to spread out on. It's a tribute to, starting at 7 o'clock, tribute to the Allman Brothers. So it'll be a nice event with fireworks that night out in the, in the Ketchel community. All the money and proceeds will be going to our first responders. They're going to be making the check to first responders to honor them. Director Hudgens said that he will have a presence out there as well, so someplace you may want to take, take some, some of your family if you're bored. I want to take just a moment to thank several people. First, I want to thank each one of you as commissioners for working diligently in every committee that you serve upon. Back in January, when I, we started the budget process, and I sent out a letter to every department head and asked them to bring us their needs budget and a wants budget. And after COVID hit, I sent out another letter and told our department heads that we're not sure where we're headed. No one knew. We were all nervous and scared what it was going to do to us. So the letter went out and told them to bring us a bare-bones budget, and every department responded. When they brought it before me to make my recommendations, and then as we started through the budget process, we continued to whittle it down. IT cut over $700,000 out of their budget. Fire and Rescue cut over a million. They left out one piece. They took one piece out of the rotation of pieces of equipment. Sheriff's Department, on and on and on. Every department answered the call. As Lisa said, these are unusual times. I don't think this county has ever faced anything like what we're facing today, and it's still not over. I encourage everyone to continue wearing your mask. This issue is not over. We're not sure it's going to continue to spike, but our numbers are still not looking good. We had another death yesterday, and we've been increasing by 25 per day of positive cases. On the good side, this county's blessed. Rutherford County has been blessed. We have a lot of great things happening with us. I want to thank the, Mr. Spurlock. I know he just slipped out, but I have two other staff members back there. Thank him and the school board for them responding. They saw what we were facing coming up to today, whether or not we were going to have to have a tax increase. They responded as well, and they cut a lot of things that they probably would like to have. But they got it down to the bare bones, and what brings us to the point that we can celebrate. We're not having a tax increase today. But God has blessed this community. We have great people. You all are smart. I feel comfortable that this is now, when the census comes back, we're going to be the fourth-largest county in the state of Tennessee. And this commission is the gold standard for the rest of the state to look upon, because we're doing things right. Everybody wants to know what we're doing in every different department. I get calls all the time, can we come down and look and see how you all are doing it, from ambulance to sheriff, et cetera? So I think things are happening for us, will continue to happen for us, and will continue to be blessed. I want to wish everyone a happy 4th. I want to ask you to be safe in your, your journeys. Commissioner Gurley's headed up to New York, is taking his doctor, his daughter to Mount Sinai. She just left North Carolina, and she's already got a job at Mount Sinai in New York City. So they're going to start that three-day trip up to New York and try to find her a place to live. So we thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you this year. Look forward to coming back and take a few weeks off, and we'll come back and hit it into the next fiscal year. Thank you very much. And without any other comments, we'll stand in German.